So, I'm gonna kinda narrate. My wife took the video. I edited it down because there was quite a bit of me swinging on the swing. So this is that venue I was talking to you about, so I'm gonna kinda walk you through it. So remember, everything is kind of put together, is biodegradable or sustainable. And so those boxes I was telling you about are suspended above that scaffold. And this is all chipboard and two-by-fours holding up, and I want you to picture the inside of the arena, for example. So they have made this kind of performing arts center out of low-cost, low-impact materials. You could scale that up or down to fit into the arena, for example. So it's just basically risers, you could have cushions there. At the top, it's a flat surface, there's bar tables, like cafe-style tables. You can see the stage down there, it's made of the same material, so you could rebuild that stage to suit whatever performance you were thinking of. You could, for example, maybe pull that stage out if the farmer's market was going in there, or remove sections of that. The whole thing can be kind of torn down or rebuilt whoever you want. But I know Mackenzie and I saw this, and the first thing we thought of was performing arts. Why renovate or rebuild a building that has good bones to the cost of potentially millions and millions of dollars, and whether it's the arena or another structure, when you can repurpose something for a low cost? And I thought the space was really cool. Not the thickest cushions, so I might suggest thicker cushions. But the different seating options, the place was, this was the last day towards the end of the conference, but otherwise, the place was packed constantly. This is where you would meet for what they call a brain date. You can see up there, you set a meeting with someone through the app, and then as you get closer, that person needs to actually start lighting up and vibrating, so you know you're meeting the right person. Or you grab one of those signs on the right that have different pictures, and you say, "I'm over by that sign." But I just, I thought that would be a really cool thing to kind of show here, and then send that out to the community. I'm not sure we're interested in doing that, but certainly if there was a, if there was a community group who was looking for an idea to create a performing arts venue somewhere in the region, whatever, why, why start with, "We have to tear down and build," or "We have to renovate the whole thing"? Like, once you're inside, you can make it look whoever you want. And I just thought that was really, really cool. So that's just a shot from the, from one of those booths, one of those skyboxes, if you will. So you can still even have those around the outside if you wanted, but you can see people working at the tables, and then they overlook, overlook the stage below. And that's just from the other side, different style of seating. So each of the, the top four corners, each had a different style of seating, depending on what kind of meeting you were having. So, I just wanted to share that with you, because I thought that was, that was really cool. But I'm really excited, I've already had a number of emails from participants at the event, looking to connect and get more information about Bridgewater, so I'll be passing that on to staff, of course, who can filter through those. And I had two very, very interesting conversations, one I'll share today, and then we'll move on. It was a German gentleman who had just sold his solar startup that he started a few years ago to his son, and was looking to move to Canada, was very interested in Nova Scotia, to start another solar startup, but he was looking for a place that would be, you know, welcoming to, to people of German descent. And so when I explained that we literally have a community near Bridgewater called New Germany, first he didn't believe me, so he Googled it. But the next day I saw him, and he was all excited, and he, he was very much interested in having a further discussion about the amenities in the, in the community, and the options, and again, that was energized Bridgewater, where we know future phases will include some solar components, and, and what that would mean in terms of opportunities for him. And the company he sold to his son is, is not a very, it's not small, it's not a mom-and-pop operation, it has a number of employees, and so if he's looking to replicate that in our community with high-paying jobs, then if that's what comes out of a conference like this, then it's very much worth the drive to Montreal. Anyway, really cool. Any questions?
Great.
Cool. All right, down to presentations. Deputy Mayor Tanner, do you wanna take that away?
Sure. Is Christine Anderson in the audience? Hi Christine, come on down. Christine won the Boxing Nova Scotia Provincial Senior Novice Women's Championship that took place in Spryfield on January 19th, 2019. She followed this up with a third-place finish at the Brampton Cup, an Olympic-style tournament that attracts boxers across the country in Ontario from February 1st to 3rd, 2019. And the medal she just received from the mayor is a 2019 Boxing Nova Scotia Provincial Senior Women, Novice Women's Champion, Christine Anderson. And I think the mayor wanted to spar with you a bit, get that on video. No? Maybe not. Maybe not tonight.
Congratulations.
No, no. I'm not gonna win.
Congratulations, Christine.
Are there any members of the public here that wish to come before council as a delegation? No? No members in the public? Okay. You have the minutes of May 27th, Town Council in front of you. Any errors or omissions?
Thank you.
There? Hearing none, we'll deem the minutes approved, and we'll go down to planning items. Application to amend the municipal planning strategy in historic downtown commercial C1 zone. Turn it over to our Director of Planning.
Oh, nope, there's just a sealed slide. So the Town Community Development Department received an application by Black Seal Properties on May 29th requesting an amendment to the municipal planning strategy to create the ability to negotiate height and design elements by development agreement. So Black Seal Properties has, they're proposing a four-story building on the vacant lots at 527 and 535 King Street, and they're looking at redevelopment options for 641 King Street. Both properties will have ground floor commercial and upper-level residential. The historic downtown commercial, or C1 zone, is a zone that encourages development, mixed-use, commercial primarily development, and mixed-use, encouraging compact development form, adaptive reuse, infill development in the downtown, but also has design controls to help ensure key physical attributes of the built form, and make sure they're consistent and contribute to the streetscape. I was looking for the clicker, the pointer.
It's there.
Unattached. Okay. So the requested amendments to the planning strategy would impact all C1-zone properties. And so this is just a preliminary report, just saying that we've received this application, requesting that you refer the matter to staff to go through the planning process, and to schedule a public participation meeting for June 25th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And then the next step after that public meeting would be the thorough planning policy analysis, and then we would return to council with, you know, with a path forward. Any questions about what exactly they're asking for?
Yeah, it's all in the reports.
It's all important.
All right. I know this generated already quite a bit of excitement online, so we just wanna remind the public that this is, it has to go through various stages, and the first stage is which council wishes to do with a motion, to, to move it forward. So are you prepared to make that motion? Council Fager?
Yes, I'll make a motion. That Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the matter of the requested MPS amendments contained in Document 19-074 to staff to undertake a public participation meeting on Tuesday, June 25th at 6:00 PM at Town Hall.
Second or please, Council Graves. Further discussion? No, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I was gonna, you know what, I'm gonna add a back-and-forth with our Communications Director about, is that your title, Communications Director? Let's go with that. And maybe, I'll, I'm gonna post it tomorrow on Facebook, maybe I'll take this opportunity just to say, just to say that developments like this, or interest in development like this, is quite exciting in our community. But I do hope that when people are going to comment online, publicly, on, on any item, but this tends to bring these out, that you maybe just pause and think about who is reading your comment. We all want this town to succeed, and we all want to see this continued excitement and redevelopment and revitalization of our downtown. And to have this level of interest all at once in King Street, I don't remember that But when I see comments based not on fact, but rumor, or just, you know, "I don't like this, therefore I'm going to just lay out how bad things are," I just want people to think, "Who's reading that?" So if I was a current developer or a future developer, reading an article about development in the Town of Bridgewater, and I saw a whole bunch of comments, again, not based on fact, just about, "Oh, it's a ghost town," or this or that, whatever it is, if you're also one of these people who wants to see the town succeed, or wants to see the region succeed, because the success, the success of Bridgewater impacts the success of the region, and arguably the entire southwestern arm of Nova Scotia, it's, it's not great for a developer to see that. I remember when, when Value Village was announced for the mall property, and this isn't whether you like Value Village or not, but the number of comments, negative comments, and I saw the, the business itself responding to these comments, and I thought, like, they're reading this, and probably wondering, "Well, why would we come to your community? Why would we spend money, hire people, pay taxes?" Right? So you have a business that's gonna hire dozens of people or more, using that example, do we want to be the community that makes them think twice about that? And I'm not saying, "Don't share your opinion." And I'm not saying we should only say positive comments. What I'm saying is, just think about it first. If you have a question, ask a question, for sure. But, and I do wanna be clear, I'm not saying people shouldn't share their opinions at all, but just think about who's reading that. Think about if it's that next developer who's gonna put in something really cool for youth, for our teens, or for building something that's gonna attract that doctor, and then has that, "Well, doesn't seem like the people of that community really want us there." I just, I just wanted to kinda put that out there so that people think about that, because there's gonna come a time when that does have an impact. And we can only do so much to generate that positive vibe, and obviously it's working. Staff are working tirelessly to work with developers like this. All we hear is constantly how great it is to work with the planning staff and engineering to get these things going forward, and we wanna keep that momentum up, and we don't want anything to kinda be a bump in the road. So I just wanted to share that. Comments were, were great today, it was nice to see people seeing, saying that it's, they're looking forward to some of these things, we have some work to do to make them happen, but I just wanted to share that. Sorry, that's my, that's my last rant for today, until we get to the next topic, which is Municipal Affairs 12-Month Notice Letter. Yeah, I spoke to Stan, I shouldn't have said that. So this is correspondence for information. There's some items in here. Does council have any questions? It is just for information, but I did express my disappointment at any occasion where another level of government dictates the tax regime on a, on another level of government. So in this one with the short-term accommodations, not being able to charge a commercial tax rate to what could potentially be a commercial operation, like an Airbnb, if you don't live in the house and you're constantly renting it out, one could argue that that could be a commercial use, and we haven't had that discussion, so I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do that, but if that use then causes a commercial use, like a hotel, to go out of business, then one could also argue that you've actually gone against what your goal was, because you're putting another business out of business based on the tax regime. So I have expressed my, my, at least my concern that a 12-month notice of "This is what we're doing" instead of a 12-month notice of "We'd like to talk to you about the impact of that" for that one, I was a little disappointed with that. Anything else on that one? No? Okay. There's a letter from the Rotary Club, and I think this is worth mentioning as well. "Thank you to the Rotary Club of Bridgewater District who completed the building of a community garden shed in Hodge Podge Community Garden on Aberdeen Green. That, that, that work is so valuable, those volunteer hours are so valuable. So thank you very much to Dale Heisler and her, who's the club president, and to Rotary Club. So thank you." Next item is Declaration of Climate Change is an Emergency by CBRM. And then attached after that are various letters of correspondence council has received regarding the delegation that came for ATV use on the Centennial Trail. And of course, any correspondence that comes to council, comes to this meeting. Any questions on any of those?
Just on the ATV, do we know when it will be coming approximately back to council?
We have not yet.
Okay.
We, okay.
Good question. Okay, nothing under correspondence for action. Next item is Policy 72, Disposal of Surplus Equipment Policy and Procedure.
These are really housekeeping in nature, one to address a typo in which we believe there was a comma in the wrong spot, for what, what the CAO would have the ability to deem to be surplus and dispose of without having to come to council for approval. So you can see how it was originally noted, 100,000,000. So that was either $100, which it probably wasn't, but it could've been, or it was meant to be $10,000. So staff's assumption is that that was meant to be $10,000, an asset with a value of $10,000 and under, and therefore that change was made. And then there was another to, to deal with surplus equipment that would go to the IT or the Information Technologists with the Police Department as well. So they're really, unless council has concerns about the value of what would be considered to be something within their purview of the CAO to sell a surplus, as opposed to tendering, like coming to council and doing a tendering process, then the housekeeping amendments are here for, you've given notice, so they're here for approval.
I was just gonna remind the public that the last meeting, we gave notice that all these were coming to this meeting. Any questions on that? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the revised disposal of surplus equipment policy and procedure as presented in Document 19-059A, and approve it as Policy 72 for the town effective immediately.
Seconded by Council McDonald. Any discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Policy 79, Purchasing and Tendering Policy.
Council's already approved this by motion previously, where there were annual purchases that would be done for goods or services, what we do on an annual basis. They have a value of over $25,000, or potentially could, so your policy would normally require that those go through tender. I believe last year, council passed a, a motion to enable those to be addressed through procurement with competitive purchasing, but the CAO could approve the purchase of those. And technically, you were required to amend your policy, just in case people change, and you don't wanna lose track of those motions. So what you have are amendments to your procurement policy, which would put those into play within your policy.
Questions on those? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the revised purchasing and tendering policy as presented in Document 18-059A as Policy 79 for the town effective immediately.
Seconded by Council Fager. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Proposed policy for wastewater reserve.
This one is just establishing that council will place surplus funds from sewer charges. I believe you've been working towards establishing sewer charges that would address the operational cost, and if there are surpluses from that, then it's a question of what do we do with those? So it's recommended through this policy that any surplus would be put into a reserve for future capital purchases related to wastewater.
Pretty straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Tom? Sorry?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the wastewater reserve policy as presented in Document 19-061A as Policy 95 for the town effective immediately.
Seconded by Council Fager. Discussion? Hearing none. Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Council Thorburn? Proposed policy for the facade improvement program?
I don't know if at the last meeting council received the detail on the program.
I wasn't at the last meeting either, so...
There was information?
I believe it did. There was a package that was considered, and there was other, because there was an application that was given conditional approval. So notice was given at the, at the last council meeting to consider the facade improvement policy, which included, so there's a two-page policy that provides the details, the purpose, and the details around the facade improvement program, and then includes the guidance document, so the guide that, and the application forms for the facade improvement program. So should I go over that again, or does anybody, or do you just wanna ask any questions that you may have?
Pretty detailed. What's up? Yeah. The report's actually quite robust. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Fager?
Yes. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the facade improvement program policy as presented in Document 19-066A as Policy 96 for the town effective immediately.
Seconded by Council Graves. Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. The next item is the recommendation of Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee for the Old Town Hills Development, naming of the park.
Right. So a park component is required for the development and the plan development in the Old Town Hills, former golf course, development. And so in accordance with the parks policy, the naming of parks policy, the Parks Recreation and Culture Committee received a number of recommendations from the Heritage Advisory Committee, and they considered those and have made a recommendation that consider the, there were a number of them, so Ross Ramey Park, Old Town Park, were the two that HAC put forward, and Parks Recreation and Culture chose Old Town Park as the one to make a recommendation to council, given that it reflects the history of the Old Town Golf Course, which the development is also named for, and the fact that most people will probably refer to it as Old Town Park, whether it had another name or not. And so that's sort of the reasoning. So PRC made that motion at their April meeting.
Any questions on that one? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald was first.
Oh, sorry.
That, Council Graves, sorry.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Parks Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee that the Old Town Hills Development Park Plan be named Old Town Park.
Yes, seconded by Council Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is the Report to Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, May 2019. They had a very successful event in the middle of the month, 15th of May. Council Graves and I attended the Wednesday, was it Wednesday evening? I think so, Wednesday evening. Event, and it was almost, was it full? It was as close to full as it could be. Yeah.
Thursday day was packed.
Yeah. So and this is the, that was the first, the first...
First in 10 years.
Yeah, so great to be able to host it in this area, and Chris, of course, has done a fantastic job. Are there any questions on, on the reports there? Business Rising and Unfinished Business, we have the second and final reading, Police Commission Bylaw Amendments. I don't know if there's any, any discussion on this one, it's just wording changes and...
Code of Conduct was added.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. And, yeah, you ready?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amended Police Commission Bylaws presented in Document 19-056, adopt as bylaw unauthorized staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of Municipal Government Act.
Seconded by Council Fager. Any discussion? Hearing none. Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next one is rescinding motion, purchase of police vehicles. So as we know, we purchased now two Dodge police SUVs, because the pricing changed on the Fords to make them cost prohibitive, so the motion is, is there to rescind. If someone is prepared to make that motion? Council Graves?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater rescind motion 19-068, approved April 8th, 2019. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation, Chief of Police, to purchase two 2020 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Sport, each at a cost of $38,521, including that net HST.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Deputy Mayor Tanner? I'll just take the opportunity to remind the public again that we're buying SUVs, as are most, if not all, police departments, because they don't make police cars anymore. Ford does not make cars, essentially, certainly not for police use. General Motors does not have a police package car that meets the specs. And so, like other municipalities, we're left with sport utilities or pickup trucks. And some are buying pickup trucks, and we've chosen to go a sport utility route. The other is, we do have new technology for roadside breathalyzer, the AEDs, and the roadside cannabis testing, that all require to be at a constant room temperature, and so they can't, some of these newer devices cannot be in the trunk. And we were putting them on the front seat next to an officer, which is not the ideal scenario, especially if there were ever to be an accident, then you've got a device that, I don't know if they buckle in with a seatbelt, but it's not, it's not the conditions that they should be in, so. So we have a mover and secondor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Item 11.3, Waste Collection Contract for 2020 to 2024.
So council awarded the contract for waste collection to GE's Environmental back in February 2019. To effect that, we're required to have a contract in place. So the Joint Services Board acquired legal counsel, and they developed a contract for all parties to consider. It's been modified to reflect the, the services within the Town of Bridgewater. If you remember, we're gonna be increasing service levels with this contract, which will be effective April 1st, 2020. So we'll do communications respecting that with our residents to ensure that everyone is fully aware by that date, so they don't, these service level increases don't occur until then. But we'll be doing bi-weeky, bi-weekly bulky waste collection, annual curbside electronic waste collection, they'll be doing green cart administration, and then we'll have a weekly summer organic waste collection as well, that'll go from July to September. So those will, those are reflected in the contract that you see before you, and the contract is here for council's approval.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the service level increase did not come at a...
That's correct.
Increase in price, so...
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, decrease in price over the, the current contract, so that's, that's great news for the residents. Any questions on that?
Just a comment, I guess, is...
Just a comment, I guess, is in regards to the bulk waste. This came, we started talking about this in February, when there was still snow on the ground, and then when the bulk waste came through in, in May, I believe, April May. There's a lot of people that go through the items that are left for people outside the road, and having a weekly service is really going to put some pressure on those folks. I think that in the long run, more waste will go into, into landfill than less, because people just don't have the opportunity to pack, you know, pack through it, or look through it. So just a comment, be interesting to see how it, how it pans out over, over the next couple of years, but I think it's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, I've, I've actually heard that from a couple of folks, who do rely on kind of being able to rummage through, if you will, and, and, you know, find a chair here, or maybe a couch there, or something, but they can repair, a lot of them actually repair it, and then that becomes their business. If you throw out an old freezer and then they take it, they can, that's it. Council McDonald?
Is that something that we could ask the Joint Services to kind of try to measure for us in some way over the next couple of years? If they don't know that it's a concern, then they...
They'll be, they'll be able to measure, yeah, as it goes across the scale, to determine how much of an increase in tonnage would have been in solid waste in general, right?
Right.
Because it'd be picked up in the, the truck, so they'll, they'll know that. So we'll be able to monitor that, to let you know if we're getting more of that type of waste or, or it's decreasing.
Because some of the stuff is good, it's good stuff, it's just not needed at that particular household, right?
Yep.
It's okay to see that boom line.
I think also with the pot, whether or not the weight increases, it would be nice to also compare how the dumping, you know, illegal dumping is impacted, whether it means less people are, are dumping, because they can get stuff out of the way, so just those two factors, if we can look at those kind of somewhere down the road, and see how it's impacted both of those.
Sure. Any other discussion on that one?
Ready for motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater authorized the execution of the curbside waste collection service, services agreement between the Town of Bridgewater and GE's All Trucking Limited, operating under the business name GE Environmental, as presented in document 19-073.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is request to reallocate budget for, this pertains to the skate park shelter and the outdoor pool.
Yes.
Yep. So this is, got some cost savings from the Alexandra Avenue Accessibility Project that we want to kind of reallocate to the skate park shelter project, and then we have some ongoing, trying to think where we, where we found the savings for the outdoor pool. Oh, it's just within the original budget.
Within the original budget, so I'll speak first to the skate park shelter. The approval of that capital project was contingent upon external funding, which we did not receive. In the meantime, the accessibility work at Alexandra Ave has been primarily completed, so there's some cost savings in that project, so the request to council is, can we reallocate some of those cost savings to make up for the funding shortfall that we did not get for the skate park shelter? And if that is amenable to council, then we would be able to build the shelter at the skate park. The second request is around the outdoor pool, so there's a $115,000 capital item in the budget, and that was for the repair of the leak and the resurfacing of the pool. The resurfacing, the savings has come from the quote that we received for that work. It came in less than originally anticipated, they were able to cover some more of the repair work and the leak detection work. So it came in less, which is great. So we are requesting that we could increase the scope of the work to be able to take care of some of the deferred maintenance required at the pool facility. So that's some interior maintenance and repair work, as well as some exterior maintenance and repair work, so including things like scraping and painting, repairing the, the diving board, needs to get some, it was a little bit rusty, so it needs to get some work done to it. Painting of the building, replacing the ramp. We are doing some of that work under the existing maintenance budget, so some of that work you'll, you'll notice has already started. The wheelchair ramp, like the accessibility ramp into the building was very rotten, so that's being redone right now as well, so that's sort of the scope, so if we could increase the things we can do within that capital budget. It wouldn't increase the cost of the budget, everything would stay within the $115,000.
The work on the pool surface, has that begun?
Oh gosh, yes. Yes, 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 we are well underway.
We only have a few more weeks for it.
Exactly. Actually, I, I attended the Barracuda New Parents Meeting and said, please, everybody think good, warm thoughts. It seemed to work, because we had four days of sunshine, tomorrow it's supposed to rain. But the, the sandblasting has all been completed, they're working on the, the resurfacing work, so skin coating and repli, repairing all sorts of faults and leaks, et cetera, and the concrete work, so that's happening right now. Then they need to paint, but they need that epoxy paint to set for seven days before we can fill the pool, so we are coming up on the opening of the pool, so we need lots of good weather in the next two weeks to get that to happen on time. So, but it's well, well in hand.
Give us some light for that pool for years. Ready to make a motion?
I am. Okay. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve for the following change to the capital budget. One, redirect $5,000 of cost savings from the Alexandra Avenue Accessibility Project. Two, the skate park shelter project to offset a funding shortfall. And two, broaden the scope of the work for the outdoor pool project, undertake various additional interior and exterior and grounds maintenance work within the $115,000 budget that are not included in the original proposal.
Seconded by Council Graves, any further discussion?
Just, I'd like to commend staff for being very creative with this. I think, you know, the skate park is a huge hit, and having a shelter there would be phenomenal for those kids and adults who are using the park, and then the outdoor pool is looking really, really nice. I assume we're gonna do a little bit of landscaping out front with some shrubbery, but all, it's looking really good. Yeah, nice work.
I was thinking of the shelter for the skate park, because with, with the heat that we had yesterday, and like, just you're raining that concrete bowl, and then there's, you know, the only shelter is to kind of go into the trees where all the bugs are. Anyway, so yeah, I, I, Deputy Mayor's comments. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item, last item, is first reading, Chapter 24, Public Sewers Bylaw.
This, this one here is to, I guess, address perhaps wording that's required in our bylaw. We're required to establish a rate for, for our sewers by bylaw. Council had taken all fees and put them into a fees policy, including your sewer rates, and we're required to have some reference to that in the sewer bylaw, as opposed to in policy. So what, what Dawn has done is she's drafted some wording for the sewer bylaw that essentially says that council will establish a rate, there's various methods upon which you could do that, so you're not locking yourself down to one particular method, there's a number listed there, and you will set that rate by motion when you approve your budget. So you have the ability every year when you approve your budget to determine what that rate will be, and you will approve that by motion at that time. So this is first reading, and it's a bylaw, so you'd be required to do first reading. If you agree to them, then give, we'll give notice, and second reading will occur at a future date.
Okay. Yes, Deputy Director Finance?
Just one, one more thing, is on the same date that you do second reading, we'll ask you to approve the rates for this year, so that we can get them on the final tax bill.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Someone prepared to make a motion? Please, Council Fergier?
Yes, the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorsed the intent of the amendment to the Public Sewers Bylaw as per document 18-060C, and proceed to second reading of the bylaw at council meeting to be held on July 8th, 2019, and authorize staff to publish all public notice pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. There is no other business, we do have an incoming following this. I have a motion to adjourn, please. Council Fergier, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. We are adjourned.